Meeting to order, please stand with us. We'll be led by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance. It will be led with the pledge by Alderman Lawrence, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you and we just wanted to thank you for this special time of year. Where families gather, Lord, and we thank you for the many wonderful things that you do for us each and every year. Most of all, Lord, dying on the cross for us to save us from our sins, Lord. We thank you for the salvation that you offered through Jesus Christ. And, Lord, we pray that you would be with families during this holiday season, Lord, and keep us safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the November first, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second?
We got a motion from Alderman Hoots, second from Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an addition to our donation docket.
It's just being a motion to accept the donation of the, I think it was fifty dollars?
Yeah.
A motion to accept the fifty dollar donation to the fire department.
Okay, have a motion from Alderman Gallagher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Wheeler. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. I savit, motion carries. Next on the agenda is authorization for municipal court professional services. Mr. Nick Manley.
Yes, this item is authorization for the municipal court professional services, as the mayor noted. In events of conflicts, the city clerk, Thomas Mastin, has to engage other prosecutors and/or judges for those situations. So this motion will allow him to continue to do that. And the pay is two hundred dollars for half day and three hundred dollars for full day in the event those instances occur. And then also, there's been an increased need for interpreters as well, for Spanish, and then we have French as well. And so authorization for Thomas on an as-needed basis to hire the interpreters for fifty dollars an hour, which is the going rate for each. So tonight, I just want to have that reflected in the minutes to reflect that authority for Thomas and then also for the interpreters along with the judges and prosecutors in the event of conflict, and that's in accordance with our responsibilities under Mississippi Code twenty-one, twenty-three, three.
Somebody?
Second?
We have a motion from Alderman Hoots, second from Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. I savit, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for sanitation assessments.
This resolution just authorizes sanitation assessments for those who have not paid the sanitation charge for allow for a lean-in or a car tag hold in accordance with twenty-one nineteen-one Mississippi Code.
Some move?
Second?
We have a motion from Alderman Gallagher, second from Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
Nick, are we having much success with this as far as?
Yeah, it's not near as frequent as it was once at one point. But as, you know, there's still always going to be people who don't pay it. And then this will only apply to those customers who aren't on our utility bill because, you know, it's built through utilities. So if you have it on your water bill, you obviously can't take, you can't distinguish which one is being paid and which one's not. But there is some success going with it. I think tonight, there's only seven or eight that have been presented. So there are success. And then also, when you put a car tag hold, you can't get your tag renewed until it's paid. And so that would then also give us that money as well.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a contract with Schindler.
This contract with Schindler was entered into on August second, two thousand seventeen, for the elevator in the senior center. Since that time, Dylan Brink has been reviewing the contracts for facilities, and this is one of the contracts he has reviewed. We actually do have another contract for the senior center elevator. As this contract was done August second, two thousand seventeen, I think we can have the authority to cancel this contract, terminate it due to the fact we already have another contract with another entity and that the previous actions by the previous board can't bind this board. So tonight, the recommendation is to terminate the Schindler Plus contract because you already have another contract with Dyson Crescent or Dyson Crub, something like that.
Dyson Crub.
Dyson Crub, not Dyson, Dyson Crub, apologize, Dyson Crub Elevator. And that, that will then terminate the Schindler Plus contract and that, under the Biloxi Firefighters case, that this will not bind this board, the Schindler Plus contract.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion from Alderman Payne, second from Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a ward of bids for city parks, uh, equipment in the Parks Department.
I guess we can do all these at one time before it chooses, but the, uh, these are all went to reverse auction for the amphitheater commissary equipment, amphitheater spotlights, and amphitheater portable seating. Obviously, the amounts are right there on the agenda, six ninety-five, ninety-one, seven twenty, and one fifty-seven, nine eighty. These are the lowest and best bids for each entity, for each, uh, each item. So tonight, authorization to accept those bids and also to award the contracts for the quotes that were received by the city.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the bids for the commissary equipment, spotlights, and portable seating for the amphitheater as presented?
Second.
We have a motion from Alderman Payne, second from Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
And then each entity is on hotel, restaurant supply, strong lighting, spec seats for each entity. That'd be approved.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a contract with Siemens.
This is similar to the Schindler item. The, as noted before, Dylan Brink is in the process of reviewing contracts, facility contracts. This contract with Siemens was entered into in two thousand twelve. It was part of the contract for the Siemens upgrades and the, I guess, the energy efficient lighting and equipment. There was also a performance guarantee, our contracting agreement as well, whereby Siemens basically comes in and reviews the energy efficiency of each item and then sends a manual and gives us the savings along with the, I mean, the savings that are being realized by the city. And in addition to that, certifies that savings report. Since that time, it's become apparent to Dylan and looking at it that the city really not needing that part of the contract anymore. We paid off the loan to Siemens or the money that was used for that earlier this year. And so there's not really a need for the Siemens performance guaranteeing contract. This contract obviously was entered into by our prior board as well, but there's also an out in the contract as well. So the recommendation is to terminate the contract with Siemens this year, or for this year and in the future years. There will be a prorated cost that we do pay for the items that are, for the service that are received this year for the Siemens contract. So when you make your motion to terminate, assuming that's what you want to do, you would also want to make the motion to pay those items that are required as part of the cancellation. This year, the cost would have been nineteen thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars. So there will be a prorated amount paid for that portion of the contract since we, it was effective August or September first. So tonight, just need to allow authorization from the board, and then we can begin that process with Siemens for the performance contracting guarantee, I mean, performance contracting, uh, portion of the contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion. Nick, would you go over again what the benefit to the city was with that Siemens contract?
My understanding, the contract was entered prior to May, early two thousand twelve, but the benefits were to install certain equipment to save energy costs through the life of the contract. So there would be certain upfront initial investment of capital for certain lights, certain systems for the air and heat, also for the lighting, and that those would be on a, a system that would also, that would allow for savings of your normal costs due to the.
But it was sold as being substantial savings.
Yes.
Is there record of that at all?
I don't think they're substantial. Uh, I think there's been some savings in talking with Dylan and with the former public director, Bradley Wallace. I don't know if substantial or not. They do provide a report every year that shows you the savings, and that's what this performance contracting guarantee is. But I don't know if those, if it's considered substantial or not, and I don't, I mean, I'm not saying it's not. I don't know how you would actually measure that as well.
Right.
Now, they do show the measurements in their calculations in the report they provide. But I think there has been some concern from the city as to whether or not the savings actually justify the initial upfront costs.
Next question, we did, you know, we had a pretty large renovation here at City Hall, what, two years ago? Did any of that renovation negate or get rid of any of the Siemens?
No. No, and I'll just add this to it, you know, as Nick stated, the Siemens deal was many years ago.
Right.
And, uh, not going to get, I don't have the data, and like Nick said, we really don't have the data to measure, you know, if the savings that the city has gotten is what was proposed at that time. And since I was not in those meetings, I'm not going to comment on that, other than to say that what we've asked Dylan to do, and Dylan, our facilities director, has done a great job, is to go back over all the facilities contracts and see, is this something that we need moving forward? So as of right now, there's things that could be a future cause to us with the Siemens deal, and we one hundred percent don't feel like that's necessary anymore. Now, are we still getting some savings? I would say that we are. Just two things that will make sense to everybody. It's the automatic thing where the lights turn off automatically, where you can't adjust the thermostat in your office. I can't adjust the heat and/or air in my office. I can tell you that it's, it's a horrendous inconvenience. And so anyway, maybe that saved us a buck or two. I hope it did. But anyway, moving forward, we do not need this contract.
Will you be able to adjust your thermostat in your office?
I think that after ten years, we finally found a way that we can adjust the, and it's, and it's not me, but it's every facility in the city. So it makes sense that if you take that away, like, I got a tip for you. If you turn your temperature in your house up to eighty-five and leave it there all summer, you're going to save money, okay?
That's what I hear.
And the same thing, if you want to go, if you want to wrap it in a sleeping bag every night, turn your air down to forty. I, I, I will be brilliant, you're going to save money on your heating bill, okay? So it's kind of the same concept. It's like, hey, let me tell you the obvious. If you don't adjust your thermostat and you turn your lights off while you're sitting at your desk working and working in the dark, you're going to save money. So that's kind of what this Siemens thing has proven to be. Um, so that's why we don't feel like we need to be paying any more money from the city to keep this contract going.
Yes, and like, we've paid the, we've paid the, the cost for the actual equipment. That's been paid earlier this year. This is just for them to monitor and to ensure that we are saving the money. And I think that's what, that this is the portion of the contract that's no longer needed from the city's perspective.
Could you give a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Alderman Payne, second, Alderman Jerome. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes. That motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is a utilities contract with Central Pipe Supply.
Yeah, this contract with Central Pipe Supply is for the cellular service needed for the automatic meter readers. The contract is payable on a quarterly basis as opposed to a monthly basis, which will save the city about thirty-seven thousand dollars per year. This first year of service for automatic meter readers was paid by the contractor. So this contract with City, Central Pipe allows us to continue the cellular service for those automatic meter readers and then authorize, uh, without interruption, and so tonight we see the authorization for Ray Humphrey, utility director, to sign the contract or the invoice contract with Central Pipe Supply so that the city can be billed on a quarterly basis for the automatic meter readers, for the, uh, on, with the cellular service that's needed for it to operate those.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a motion from Alderman Kelly, second from Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the resolution granting authority to clean the private properties as listed on this date.
Second?
We have a motion from Alderman Payne, second from Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience who has a financial interest in any of the properties who would like to speak? Seeing or hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next on our agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook?
I guess our first item on the agenda is a conditional use request for a nail salon to be located at thirty-five Goodman Road, Suite G. This is going to be in the South Lake Center, west side of Airways, south of Goodman Road. You'll see in the big block highlighted in red there. Uh, it is on the building that's up against Airways Boulevard. We did approve a salon and suites there at one point in time. This is actually located directly next door to that. That was a question the Planning Commission brought up, is it, was there going to be a conflict of interest? Uh, we did reach out to Gould Salon, the owner of that. They didn't indicate to us that there was no conflict of interest for them, that they did not specialize in the nails, did not see an issue with it. Uh, we then went and checked our half-mile radius rule to ensure there was no more than two already in place, which wasn't the case. This is actually a relocation from what's already existing there. It's U.S. Nails located next to Five Guys. Apparently Five Guys is doing good enough business that they need to expand, so they're relocating the nail salon. So this is getting them in a new location in that same subdivision, but it does comply with the half-mile radius rule. And again, it's not a conflict with the adjacent salon and suite, so it was recommended for approval and voted unanimously in favor of.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item number, uh, item number one on the planning agenda.
Second? On item one, we have a motion from Alderman Jerome, second from Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries.
So our second item and final item was a request to amend the Diamonds of Snowden Plan Unit Development. Uh, this is going to be on the east side of Snowden Lane. As you'll see highlighted in red, it's the two lots to the south of Pintar Alley, right in front of the Parks Office. The request is to amend the uses allowed for those two lots to allow hotels permitted by right use on those two properties. The recommendation that was handed off to the Planning Commission was based on the recommendation that was provided in two thousand twenty-one, when an original application in February was submitted in two thousand twenty-one for both these two lots and the one to the north. Staff recommended the allowance of Lot Five, which will be the north lot where we approved the Hampton Suites, uh, to allow the hotel on that site. We did recommend denial of the lots on where you have highlighted in red here, simply because of blocking the Parks Office as well as a deterrent to Parks entrance. When it was represented to the Planning Commission last month, the Planning Commission on a split vote disagreed with that recommendation and voted to overrule it and send it to the Board of Aldermen as permitted by right. Obviously, I'm a recommending staff member, they're recommending board. What I would ask here is, um, if it is approved, that we put some contingencies on there or come up with a solution so that we can ensure, um, whatever hotel, whatever restaurant goes on this site is of good quality. We want to make sure that we're staying in line with what we have for the Snowden District. Uh, I've talked to the property owner as well as some board members and mayor as well. And I think there's some different options. We can look at it, uh, we can look at it. It's, it's not to say that whoever's buying this property does not have good intentions, it's not building a good quality, um, hotel and restaurant. But because of where it is and because of the location in front of the park and because of the location in front of our Parks Office, uh, I just feel like there needs to be some more surety, um, assurances in there from the city's standpoint. One option we can look at is putting a conditional use permit on there. That would, instead of putting it in permitted by right tonight, because what you're doing, if you, if you bring it in permitted by right tonight, it is not putting any restrictions or, or allowances for that matter of any franchises. It can be from the top end of the spectrum all the way down to the bottom. You don't have any more say so at this point. What you can do is control what it looks like and how it's laid on the property, and, and that's it. So a conditional use, we could put in place that would say it's allowed under this amendment on Lot One and Two with a conditional use. And those conditions, uh, we would need to discuss with Nick to see what we could put in there in terms of, um, number of stories. So the height doesn't get out of control, um, franchises, if you wanted to go somewhere on that route. Or, um, one of the other options we looked at, and I did speak with the property owner at this point in time, was to provide us at this point, um, what the flagship is for the hotel, what the restaurant is, so we can make a determination on allowing it or not based on that information. And again, it's not to say that I think they're doing something, you know, behind the scenes and something that'll be detrimental, but we want to make sure, um, that we're doing the right thing for this area because this is such an important corner for us. So, uh, those were the suggestions coming from my office, and I don't know, you know, where you want to go from here.
So what are you recommending? Are you recommending that we table it until we get that information?
I like the idea of being, uh, being able to make the decision with documentation in hand as to who and what's coming. I mean, that's just, that's the most, that's, that's the safest way for us to ensure it. Uh, I know that that puts some hardships on the property owner. Maybe they don't want to disclose that information. But my recommendation is to have that information in hand and then make a decision.
So do you want us to table it then, until then?
I mean, my recommendation on my staff report, again, is, is going to be conflicting to this because, like I said, at first, my, my report says no. Uh, I understand that this is a site that a hotel could go on, and I'm willing to concede to that, but I just would prefer some assurances before we just put it out there by right. Again, I just, this is the park entrance, you know, and, and we want to make sure that we do it right. This is our one shot here. I know we approved one north of Pintar Alley, but that one's not at your park entrance. This is a much more prominent corner for us and much more protected in my mind. So I would just prefer some additional assurances. And I know that the, the owners in the, in the audience, he may have some of this information. I have not been given it yet. So if he wants to speak, that would be my suggestion, is to have that information in hand.
But Whitney, what, what, I guess what I'm hearing is at the, at this time, you don't know what that conditional use would, how it would need to be worded to give us the assurance.
If we go to the conditional use concept, like I said, I've got three ideas, um, that I've been kicking around on just ways to handle this. One is just permitted by right, and we just make it look as, as pretty as we can when it comes into play, but it doesn't control the flagship. Well, you don't know what's there, correct. You also don't know if it's connected to the restaurant, disconnected to the restaurant, restaurant inside. It puts more control factors if you take it beyond the permitted by right concept. Conditional use permit, I think, would put more controls in place. And it would allow him to move forward with a contract with whoever, but they would have to come back to us, and we'd have to put those conditions in place before we would accept that permit. Uh, I don't know legally, and that would be a question we could ask Nick, what we could put in place to, uh, you know, could we put flagships? Could we put mandates on where the restaurant's located? I don't know. But it is one step up from permitting it by right. And then third concept is just show us your cards and, and let's see who we got before we make the decision. I mean, those are the three ways I see this can play out.
Nick, what you got?
Whatever we have.
Well, the planning, what do you, what do you recommend?
Again, I, I think it's best to, to see the cards first, just to assure, you know, what we're getting. And I've, I've talked to the property owner, and like I said, he may have more information tonight that I'm not aware of. We've been speaking on a regular basis about it. I did inform him that I, it would make me more comfortable to know what we're getting before we just say, yes, come on. So that's my recommendation at this point.
Gary, are you able, is there, are you able to share information or is that, are those trade secrets that you can't discuss?
I want it all out on the table.
Yeah.
Where everybody knows what's going on, and, uh, I've talked to the owners, and they want what we want. And, uh, I definitely don't want a Hotel Six there or Waffle House or anything like that. So I, I don't have any problem putting conditions on it, uh, restrictions. I want a vintage, some kind of vintage, uh, restaurant that we don't have to go to Memphis and, and get a good meal. But I don't want to have to go and get a, you know, a, a sports bar either. So that's a, uh, they've assured me they're going to put ballrooms in there, meeting rooms in there. You know, right now, I'm going to Memphis for my fiftieth reunion because we have no place down here, you know? And we want something like that. I want this to be my last touch on that piece of property. And I, I don't care what restrictions we have, we have the last say on what that thing's going to look like. And we want either boutique or whatever, and we're going to work just like we're doing with Michael Wu. We have the last say on what that thing's gonna look like, and we want either boutique or whatever, and we're gonna work just like we're doing with Michael Wu. He, we've had, what, six drawings on that, and we told him, no, no, back and forth, and then work transparent with the city to where there's no, you know, uh, and also have the, where I, in my contract where I build it, and I'm not gonna build a Motel Six or Four Seasons or something like that. I want something very nice, and, uh, I want it for the city, I want it for myself, and, you know, and it's, uh, I wouldn't sell out, and I guess all y'all know that I would not sell out at all on a cheap thing up there. And if it, if it doesn't go, it doesn't go, but I think now, just tonight, is to decide, can a hotel go there? And then I think the restrictions, I don't think it needs to be tabled, 'cause if you table it fifty more times, it's still, can a hotel go there or not? And that's, I guess that's my thing, 'cause, you know, I met with you, Mayor, out there.
Right.
About position and everything. We're gonna still do the same thing, because I don't, you know, I don't want, they're talking about a hundred and twenty rooms now, 'cause the, the bigger compass are, uh, like four hundred rooms, and they just, in this, in this area, four hundred rooms just wouldn't go. I mean, they just, and, you know, and then they're talking about up in the prices of the rooms for a boutique and all, kinda like the one across the street. They're gonna be high-end. And, uh, you know, they, they said something about, I think they've met with you guys before, and, uh, talking about a bar up on the top floor, uh, and a restaurant freestanding out front, and, uh, I've been assured we could go either full Margaritaville or, uh, uh, some, something that is pleasing to the city. They keep saying we want something nice like the Peabody. Well, I can't build, build a Peabody because of age and everything else, you know, but I mean, something that...
That's some high standards, right there.
You know, it, you know, something that doesn't age, you know. I don't want siding on the thing. I don't want a lot of things. I want exactly what the city does. Whitney does a phenomenal job about, you know, canceling all that stuff that's gonna age and show, you know, wear and tear. And so, you know, it's, uh, I think we're in good hands. I mean, if, if this much can't do it, keep it in straight. I mean, I don't think we have to put anything in place as far as the law. I think we got it right here. And, uh, that's, uh, I hate to come back this soon, but I mean, I've had that property twenty years, and I'd like to see if we can do something with it before it comes up firm to parking lot, you know, 'cause that's, that's kinda where I'm at right now, you know. It's, uh, I wanna get it into burn, and it's a good fit for the city, and I don't see anything that would be counter for the city or for us, you know.
Well, I appreciate your candor, and, and, uh, we have had discussions about it. I think the thing that has raised some concern is when you and I first talked, in your commercial broker first talked, it was presented to me that this was gonna be like, uh, an upscale, something that's never been in DeSoto County before, and it was exciting, I mean. And so then, uh, since then, and that was also discussed in the Planning Commission meeting, that it would be something on the scale of a Hilton or something else upscale. So, your property, I have to tell you this, you own it, is in a great location. It's in a key spot, but it's also a, a very critical spot for the city, and all the investment that's gone into the Snowden District, both on the, uh, east and the west side. So there is concern about, uh, what type of hotel would come there. And I'm not suggesting that you would allow something that's not, uh, high quality. It's just from a city's standpoint, I do think that there needs to be, we wanna know that it is that. We don't want, because, let me just back up, and we've seen this many times over the years. When somebody comes in and they present something that's shiny and brand new, it's, it's really nice that first year, but then when you fast forward twelve, fifteen years down the road, it's not nice. And you and I both have been here a long time. We could ride around the city and look at some spots like that. So we just don't want that to happen right here, 'cause it's such a critical, critical spot in this city. And so, uh, I don't know the planning language. Uh, it was my understanding that you were gonna recommend that we table this tonight till we knew more information about what is being proposed there, because I think, I think that, uh, you mentioned it becoming a parking lot. I think the things have changed for the better for you, like everything that's happened in that area. You know this. You're an experienced businessman. You know that your property is, is more valuable than it's ever been, and it's going in the right direction now. So the fact that it's been vacant for many, many years, that's all about to change. You're about to have other prospects too, and I know you wanna do the best thing with it. Um, but I just think from a city perspective and to make sure this works good for everybody, we need to know more about what this is gonna, you know, what it's gonna be used for.
And so, um, I'm glad you brought up Compass, 'cause that was one of the franchises that was being talked about. Um, so I've got a lot of people in the hotel environment that I talk to, 'cause we've developed so many, and I've got some, um, people that work high in Marriott, Hilton and things like that. The one thing that strikes me is, is worrisome for the Compass. It is a new brand. It is not even by an SRT scales, and it's not been vetted by a flag. So it's not backed by a Marriott or a Hilton or anything like that. I think we could definitely find a hotel that fits the profile and goes on this property, but I will say with, with Compass and not knowing, they're so new on the market. They're not even classified in the chain scales, and I can't get anybody from the corporate side of any of our major, major flagships to back this hotel. Um, in this location, this is the first time I've come across this. I've never come across this before, and it, it's worrisome to me. So, I, you know, in terms of just finding out some more information, um, I, you know, I don't know where else to go to find what their classi- what their chain scale classification would be. Is it upper upscale? Is it upscale? Uh, we priced it in some different areas. Um, it seems to kinda be on the quality level of a Holiday Inn Express, uh, which there's nothing wrong with a Holiday Inn Express, but Holiday Inn Express is backed by a major flagship, and right now, at this point, Compass is not. Um, so I don't know if there's other entities that are looking at it, but, but like I said, there's, there's some, there's some things that worry me there that I think we just need to look a little bit closer into. So if we decide not to table it, I mean, if that becomes an issue, that's why I think the, the conditional use at minimum should be there, so we can put that, okay, no, this is not the one we're looking for. Yes, this one makes us feel warm and cozy. This one's back. It's been vetted. Um, I just don't have that feeling right now with Compass. I can't find any information on them.
So how do you word the conditional use permit?
Well, I don't know. That's why I was gonna try to talk with Nick and see where a conditional use permit can go. That way, the allowance is there, but, uh, what conditions can we place on it that allows us to make that decision at a, at another point in time when they come forward with their plan? Um, can we put, I know in our resolution from the Metro District, we've got identified classifications under chain scale. We don't have that over here on the Snowden side. So is that something we can put under the conditions? Um... I mean, it's, it'd be a decision from the board on what conditions they want. I think, like I said, my main thing is making sure it's vetted, flagged, backed by a reputable hotel chain is, is where I would go with that.
But you're asking the board to make a decision on things. There's a lot of unknown, I don't think it's fair to the board to have to make a decision with all these unknowns.
Well, that's kinda what I talked to, to Gary about, is like, you know, there's, there's some unknown factors there, and another thing was the freestanding hotel, or, I mean, a restaurant versus attached versus inside. I mean, that's a big factor for us, 'cause what I don't wanna see on that hard corner right there is the parking lot to a hotel. There needs to be something prominent there. There's just a lot of things that I think need to be matched or planned into it and identified as we, as we approve it. Not that we do not, but as we approve this, we just need better teeth and controls on our side for this.
Gary, can they, can they...
Are we not just saying that in this zone or this area that we'll allow a hotel?
What you're saying tonight, if it goes in as submitted now, is that a hotel's permitted by right. After this point, the only things that you will be addressing is what the building looks like. So if you let it go in permitted by right with no contingencies on it, be it Compass, Holiday Inn or whatever, you don't get to make that decision at that point. It is only under control of what the design of the building looks like.
Oh, okay.
That's permitted by right. That's why, that's why, I mean, e- even that's, that's how Planning Commission brought it up. I feel like that's a little too vague for, for this area. I mean, we wouldn't do that in a lot of, you know, in a, a lot of different situations. Um, most of the time when you have a hotel under use on a piece of property, they disclose who it is as they're submitting with us. This has just kinda been done cart before horse type thing, and I just think we need that information as we move forward.
Gary, can you get us some more information on it as far as...
Oh, good. I mean, the, the website, they are fairly new, but they're all very, very high-end. I mean, there's, they're gonna put a probably sixteen to twenty million dollars on this site, you know, and they could put a Holiday Inn Express for half that, you know. You can say Mercedes, you want the top end of the Mercedes, but they also offer the little two-seater that's less than fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, all the name brands, the high, everybody else has got their lower-end unit. We have to force them to put a high-end unit on there, and that's what we're doing. That's in my contract, that they're gonna put that, and then they, you know, give them money back so forth to where they, they've gotta put what we tell them to put on there.
I mean, for us, we're...
Excuse me?
What, a little bit of research that I've done, if you go to the Margaritaville dot com website and click on locations, it actually lists the Compass locations also.
Yeah.
In addition to all the...
Yeah, it's owned by Margaritaville. It's a, it's a chain owned by Margaritaville.
I mean, the, the couple that are actually, you know, finished right now, there's a couple in progress, so I mean...
So who owns Margaritaville?
Sir?
So who owns Margaritaville?
Who owns high, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, big conglomeration, but, you know, the one in Nashville's second to none. You know, most of them are down on the coast, so they all have that Gulf Coast look. They're all white and, you know, so you don't really get a good feel on what one in this area would be. But, you know, we're gonna change the colors, so if you put that same Compass from a white background to, to the browns that we like, it's gonna look good.
I mean, I can make it, I mean, I can make it, uh, an attractive building. I mean, what I just wanna make sure is we've got boutique hotels that were once at this tier, and it just steadily, as they've transferred ownership, gone down and down, down and down. That's why it's, it's always nice if you have a Hilton or a Marriott back, because they own and manage those properties. They don't sell them out. But we have had some that, you know, they transferred. It's just like a price A point retail center, you know, with a mall, and then the next tenants that come in, it's, it, there's just a control factor that's not there with, without that vetted flagship behind it.
Now, if you do the conditional use, will that prevent that from happening in the future? I mean, you know, yeah, he has to jump through that hoop, but does it, the next owner that comes in, do they have to, so I mean, so I mean, you know...
It doesn't. This is, this is to ensure the reputable owner at the beginning, and, I mean, we don't have that on any of our properties. That's, that's why if it's a vetted Marriott or a Hilton or something like that, you know, they, they don't leave. It's, it's their properties. Um, boutique hotels that don't have that chain scale identification have been vetted, and I'm not saying they would do this. They may end up being vetted at one point in time, but it's a new product, it's unknown, and it's not backed by any of the players that have reputable hotel chains throughout.
But they could very well become their own flagship, right?
I mean, should I, well, I don't know.
And I could win a lottery, couldn't I?
I was saying, I don't know if they could become a flagship, but those are quite hard to come by, but I mean, they could be backed by a flagship, like a Marriott or a Hilton brand. Except right now, they're not.
Most of the Marriotts and everything else are, are individually owned, but they're...
They're, they just got that flagship back.
You got a couple here in South Cleveland that's in dire need of remodeling, that we can't even stay, you know, and, and, you know. What, what, what do we have over them to make them redo their hotel? And it's, it, they're rags, I'm telling you.
But you really need there's something to sell, and, and he wants us to approve the hotel. That way, he can go out and say, if this don't work out with these guys, then the next hotel will say, hey, I, it's approved for a hotel.
I think he's got a contract on it.
Your, your planning director just told you that if you approve it, then you've, you've allowed that to happen, then whoever...
It's out of your control.
It's out of your control. You, you give up your control tonight if you do that. And again, respectfully, hey, this was presented to me, it was a Margaritaville, like a luxury style Margaritaville. And I know it's a, it's semantics here, but it's almost, kinda feels like a bait and switch a little bit. Uh, it was presented to me that this was a luxury ti- I mean, a, a resort style, you know, Margaritaville with a parrot head and the whole deal. And now what we're hearing, a Compass is not that. A Compass is owned by Margaritaville, but it's not a Margaritaville. So, so that's the way we just, just me being straightforward with everybody, I feel like I've been duped a little bit. Like, it's not what your, your commercial broker presented this to me, that it was a Margaritaville resort style hotel, and that's not what this is, it sounds like tonight.
Well, and they, they assured me before I made it to the meeting that it was a full-fledged Margaritaville. But they said that if you go to the full Compass, it's a four-hundred-room hotel, four hundred dollars a night, or you can come on down. They're gonna do a hundred and twenty rooms on this.
Yeah.
Start off with, and, uh, like I said, have the, the ballrooms and everything, and, you know, I don't know how you can make anybody else do anything else.
And, and that's why I like if we had an idea like...
Can we put that into the, uh, can, uh...
I mean, we can put whatever conditions you choose to put in there. What I would definitely not suggest is just a by right. That, that's the scariest scenario, and it's, I don't say scary on behalf of what I think you do, 'cause I know you do quality work, but that's the free-for-all. That's, you know, at, at minimum that. I, I think we need more information. Present us something where the, the idea is, the, the layout. Show us where the restaurant's located. Show us what quality the hotel is, is at. Show us what it's deemed to look like. Show us what the price point is. Uh, I just feel like going in blindly with not knowing a whole lot about the Compass and not knowing what restaurants associated with it. Is it a Margaritaville? I, I don't know, um, but this is our last lot, I think, in this part.
Gary, can you get us some plans or something?
Well, I, like, here's the deal. I, I would rather table it and let Nick figure out exactly how we need to word the conditions to protect Gary and the city at the same time. That's what I would rather do at this point. There's, right now, we're, if, if, even if he were to present plans, there's nothing, I mean, plans could change. We, I mean, we've sat on this board and approved change of plans after things have already been approved. But I, I wanna make sure that, this is too important. I mean, this is the entrance to our crown jewel, I'm very... So, I, in my opinion, y'all do whatever you want, but in my opinion, I think we need to at least table it till Nick can figure out the language to get his conditions. And look, I think we all know that we want a hotel to go there, but we also need to protect how this, how this is gonna look, and what, and what the final product is gonna be. 'Cause we're gonna be held accountable for this. It's just my...
I don't think there's enough legal minds to put something on there that you're not gonna paint somebody in the corner.
You're pretty good, Gary. You'll figure it out.
He is real good, and, uh, but it's, it, but it's, you've got a ton of hotels coming in, but if we do, we put a conditional use on the car wash, a one-year conditional use on the Showman Car Wash at Church Road in Elmore. And, uh, and you've seen how we've done with the plans. We've sent them to you. You kicked it out. You didn't like this one, everything else. And, you know, I can't build anything here that I don't go through you guys to approve it. I mean, and I, I don't know any other, uh, what kind of strong arm you have to, to go and get any better, you know. I mean, y'all approve the permits. It's gotta go back through the, the planning, I mean, you know, the planning. Once the thing is laid out and everybody likes it and can see, it does not distract from the signage on the, on the Bank Plus building and so forth. It lays out like everybody likes it, and we all look at it, and it's, you know, we say, no, we don't like color brick. Whatever, we keep wearing it out and taking it for years and years and years we need to. And that'll, you know, and, and the conditional use does that. But I think tonight, are we gonna let any hotel go there? I think tonight, you know, it doesn't need to be tabled. I think the details need to be worked out, 'cause they're not gonna give you a drawing on this and put money in it until, until they own the land and to like, until it's approved for a hotel. I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't put a ton of money in it for the...
Are they your only, this Compass brand isn't the only one that's looking at this property, or have other ones that maybe have some other...
For twenty years, we were gonna put hotels on this site.
Well, I mean, I, I know that that happened, but you have a lot of players right now in this market that are heavily looking for, um, you know, we've got some that work out of Oxford with us and, and that are working on some now that have those flagships that I guess, you know, have been a little bit...
Well, we've had a couple low-end that we never would sell to.
Oh, yeah, we don't want a lot.
Uh, most of them, you know, my partners were, you know, they own the, the Hiltons and the Hampton, Hampton Inn. They're the largest in the country, Phil McNeil, Spence Ray. And, uh, they did not want anything over there at the time, because it was away from the interstate. Everybody was looking for something at the interstate. But, you know, yeah, with Scotty from day one, Scotty Baker, we wanted a hotel over there where we could have the, pretty much baseball year-round, you know, and, uh, and, you know, so it's been planned for twenty years for a hotel, and, and, uh, when the last administration was here, they colored it in green and said that they owned it. Everybody would call, they'd tell them they owned it. So, you know, like I said, I waited twenty years. I don't know. I just, were you gonna do it or not? So, I mean, that's...
Well, I'm glad we don't get held accountable for everything that prior administration did, and thank God we don't. But the other thing I would say is, you, it, it, it has to be said tonight that the reason the demand for hotels has changed is because of the investments that we've made in that area. Because like you said, I can tell you for ten years, I've been trying to recruit hotels. I wanted hotels in that area too. And until about three years ago, it was, no, like you said, by the interstate, we're not interested. When you start, uh, making the park not just a baseball park anymore, it's a year-round park that has year-round consumers in the area, it's changed the demand for that real estate, and it's changed your property too for the better. And so I think we're all in a better situation than we were before. We just wanna be cautious that it happens, like, and I don't think you have any ill intent, don't misunderstand me, but what I do know in business that a lot of, and I've been a part of many developments that have come to this city, and the way they're presented on the front end is not how they are ten years down the road. So this board has a, and I too, have the responsibility of making sure that we, uh, that we protect the city. And, uh, we don't just, we don't trust anybody to do that. We have a job to do it. And there is a big difference in a Margarita, even though the same, uh, group of people own it, there's a big difference in a Margaritaville hotel that was presented to me and a Compass. Uh, you don't have to be a hotel, uh, a professional hotelier to know that. There's a big difference in the two. So I'm not saying that it won't work. The only thing I'm saying is that I would recommend this board get questions answered before you, you vote to do that, because if you vote to approve it, uh, you've given up any kind of controls that you have in the future in protecting the city. So are you making a motion to table it?
I would make the motion to table it, but I have one question first. Do they have any conceptual designs, any renderings?
Uh, they've got a website, and they can get the conceptual. The guy for Compass would be here tonight if I'd ask him to, but, you know... But, you know, I don't think any of their theme is gonna work with our theme, you know? I mean, this is our Bill Street, this is our Cooper Young District, this is the only thing we got. And so, we're gonna get everything to where it blends in to what we like, not what compass likes or who, whatever.
So, what you're saying, that they don't have what, we can't go to the website and see what they're gonna put here. They're gonna put something specific to Snow Grove, South Haven, and what we're doing.
Yep, but you can go look at, like Whitney said, with any hotel that comes here, you know, they're, most of them are classified.
Yes, and the SRT scales, we, we, we vet them and then we call around and get your price points and things like that.
Yeah, because, um, Hilton Embassy Suites is not gonna become a Super Eight. It may be, become something else, but it's not gonna become a Super Eight. A Super Eight's not gonna become an Embassy Suites. So, that's the reason that, that they're graded, so you know what it is. At this point, what Whitney's telling you is that compass has not been in this area, and if you look at their scale in the marketplace in Florida, they're not considered an upscale hotel, they're, they're very middle of the road at best. So, and I'm not saying Gary and them can't make it that, they, they may, can make it, but there's no history of that. Like, their compasses in Florida are very, um, I don't wanna call them a budget hotel, I don't think they're that, but they're definitely not towards the, um, top of the spectrum as far as the quality of hotel. They're, they're more.
Get out of Florida, get out of Florida, and they are, just like Nashville, I think they're four hundred bucks a night.
Yeah.
And they're as nice as any hotel you've ever been in.
I just think it's fair, again, this is a special, we've come a long way, working hard to make this area special, it's gonna benefit this man financially. Um, we need to be careful with this, we need to know more information, so that's what, that's my recommendation and your planning director's recommendation.
So, we can do any conditional use tonight, Nick? That would be absolutely something we would have to.
I think, I think conditional use is your only, yeah. I mean, I guess you would have to, I mean, do, you have to, does your, does your board apply for conditional use or can you do it without?
No, right now, it doesn't allow for it at all.
I'm saying, would they have to go through, I guess in this instance, if you do a conditional use.
If you require, if you, if you change it from permitted by right to permitted via conditional use permit, then it, then it requires conditional use permit, then you have to put the contingencies on there.
Yeah, and then you have to then apply for it through the conditional use process? So, okay, so you still, even though you.
But we have to determine what the conditions are to be met under that conditional use.
I agree with that.
Um, you know, we're talking a lot about elevations, I, you know, he knows, since we can, we can control the elevations, 'cause design review will come to you no matter what it is. Um, so you just have to decide what those conditions would be. Um, you know, I referenced Metro District, Metro District does have the qualifications of the SRT scales, Luxury, Upscale, Upper Upscale, uh, are the only allowances in the Metro District to ensure that the Embassy Suites and things like that are who come into play there. This is, that's not the case over here, and, uh, Hampton Suites that we just approved on his other lot, very attractive, uh, it's upper middle scale. Um, so, you know, if that's a contingency you wanna put on there, we just have to get very detailed on what is required under that conditional use permit. I think we don't need to focus on what the building looks like, 'cause we can address the building if it's a grocery store, or if it's a retail center, or if it's a hotel, we can control that. Uh, you know, that doesn't change the quality of the hotel itself.
So, we can make, we can require it to be the same thing as the, the ones we approved over at Hampton?
I mean, you can require whatever you wish, what, what I would argue on this right now, and that's what the mayor and I were trying to point out, is the SRT scales, which are the international scale system that cla- that classifies hotels by their price point, amenities, and things like that, and where they're located. Compass is new enough where it's not even on the spectrum yet, so I have no idea where they're gonna be classified. So, if we put that contingency in there, I can't say they're comparable, 'cause I don't know, because they're not in our SRT scales.
Alderman, what she's saying is, whatever happens there, we have architectural controls on what the building looks like, but what we don't have control is the price points, and that's when you get into a situation where if one comes and it's one thing and, and everything is shiny on the front end, five, seven years down the road, it could be a different, something different, that, that's not, uh, that does not have the, you know, the price scale to keep it in a, you know, to keep it, uh, you know, towards an upscale or, or middle-of-the-road type hotel. So, that, that's what the risk is, it's not, can we make it look good? We know if Gary builds it, we know it's gonna look good, um, so it's not that, it's just that, it's what type of animal are you bringing here? You know, and, and there's a.
Are they gonna continue to take care of it?
Is it gonna continue to be that style hotel? So, like, there's a big difference in a Margaritaville hotel and a compass hotel. They're, they're two totally different things, it's like, you know, buying a, you know, Chevrolet, you know, getting a Corvette and a Chevette. I mean, they're, they're both Chevrolets, but they're two totally different cars. Sorry to go back to the eighties with Chevette, that's a good example. Um, so anyway, hey, we've talked about it a lot, uh, my recommendation is to table it till we know more. Uh, I think the conditional use permit would be good, but we don't know what the conditions are, 'cause we, until tonight, no one's, no one's told us for sure that it's a compass hotel. I mean, like I said, I was told that it was a parrot head resort style Margaritaville.
Whitney, is that something that you can get with your team to come up with some reasonable, uh, conditions that?
I can do that, um, you know, like I said, I've reached out to as many of the hotel chain people as I know too, but I can maybe reach out to the SRT company and see if they've got them on the radar in front of their, got some more background information. Um, like I was asking Gary if he can bring me some comparable information, um, you know, just so we can, I don't wanna be a testing site for a new brand that we know nothing about. So, I, I feel like there's got to be some background vetting on it, and I have been unable to get that on compass. And, and like we said, until tonight, the full confirmation that it was compass, you know, I'd heard that, but, um, there's no confirmation of it. So, you know, that being said too, there's just, there was a lot of unknowns.
Gary, I think we'd all feel a little more comfortable if we knew it, it was gonna be a Margaritaville and, and not have the compass name on it.
Or even something better than a Margaritaville.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think we can put that down, because I'm all with you, I don't have any problem putting conditions on it, you know, on, on any of it, you know, 'cause I want the best there is there.
And I think we all agree to that.
I want, I, I want the conditions also, and to get the conditions, we're gonna have to table it, 'cause there's no way to do it tonight, it just won't happen.
And could it be possible to, since the person you're talking to has Margaritavilles and compass hotels, could they come and put some assurances in a public hearing next time that it turns into the Margaritaville that was promised to the mayor versus the compass?
I'm sure they, they would volunteer tonight, I just couldn't get the.
Sign it up, man.
I'm gonna make the motion.
We can get them up here in December.
You're gonna make a motion of what?
Table.
We have a motion to table, Alderman Wheeler is our second.
I'll second it.
We have a second, Alderman Flores, any other discussion?
I just, I, my, I just wanna make sure that Nick, that we, we come up with the right conditions to protect the city as well as Gary's property. And, and we lay those conditions out right, 'cause whatever we did in Metro, we really should be doing here.
Well, why don't I work with Gary in the meantime and have it come up at the next meeting, let me work with him and see which ones we can agree on, which ones we feel safe for us, that I feel warm and cozy about, what you think you can actually bring forth, and then we can get with Nick and make sure that everything's across the board legal, that we can enforce and not enforce, and then bring that back to the next meeting.
I, I agree with that, I don't want, I don't want Gary holding on.
I would agree.
I don't, I don't really, but I'm gonna make sure that he, you know, he's comfortable with it as well.
They're not gonna spend any money until they, they're approved, until they're assured that they get a hotel, so it's kinda like a catch twenty-two.
I think if, if they come in though, and we, we talk to them and, and we're on the same page, I think we'll be okay. Uh, so, but we're not gonna push it pa- any further than the next meeting.
Yeah, no, I agree, it's gotta be done by the next meeting.
And I agree, you know, forty-five years of business, I've had just about everything pulled on me there is. So, I don't want any kind of shenanigans on this here, so I want everything out, just like it, 'cause I mean, you know, I run a bulldozer through it, 'cause I don't wanna, I don't want anything there that's not gonna compliment the city.
I appreciate that. And I will tell you too, we've done other deals, um, just in my ten years with the city, we've negotiated other deals that had that contingency in there. Uh, obviously, they're not gonna go buy the land if they can't build what they wanna build on it, and so you can put that contingency in the land agreement, that can be worked out as well, so.
One, one thing I think that we're getting hung up on is the compass theme, you know, if it's a Margarita theme, I think that they're a hundred percent for it. It's just that that's what they had started out doing, the hotel part being compass and Margaritaville being, and I think ownership-wise, you know, they let management groups, whatever, run them or whatever, individuals. You know, they got a, a super nice one in Nashville, I tried to get videoed for you guys, but when you're looking up, you know, you can't do it on the phone, you know?
Well, if that's, if that's the case, and I think that eases the concerns of everybody, but, but that's the thing, is what's out there now, when you go to their website, there's a, a Margaritaville which, you know, my eyes lit up, you know, when your broker came to me and said, what do you think about a Margaritaville? You know, I'm thinking about Jimmy Buffett and parrot heads, I'm like, double thumbs up, let's go with it. And then, but when you go to the compass website, that's a totally, what's out there now, and you go look at the compass hotel and the Margaritaville, they're two totally different animals. Yeah, so i- if there's a way that we can, you know, with a conditional use, get a comfort level on what this is gonna be, I think that, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Well, and, and the hotel people I'm talking to, uh, outside of this group, they can't even believe that Margarita, Margaritaville's even considered South Haven, because of its size.
Yeah.
And, and that's a huge plus for them to even be considered, you know, South Haven, the city.
And that's why I was excited about it, and I, um, and I'm sure the board as well, is, you know, that's been our goal in the Snow District, is to create the first true entertainment district in DeSoto County.
Right.
And it's going well, it's going really well, so we think that the, the progress that has happened is also appealing to these people who would not otherwise come here, but now that they will come here. And that's why I think, I think your property is, is, uh, I mean, you know this, you wouldn't have bought it, it's an, it's an excellent piece of property, and it's only going up. And so, I definitely think that, uh, that's gonna be a key piece, you know, of what, uh, continues to happen in our entertainment district, so. I just wanna make sure that we, I'm with you, I just wanna make sure that we do it right, that we don't get into a situation like I've witnessed so many times ten years down the road, it looks a whole lot different, I wanna make sure that we do the city right.
And how do we, uh, how do we do, uh, like, you know, we got a lot of stuff coming across the street, how are we gonna put these conditions on others? And were there any conditions put on the one that's going up in Silo Square now?
Yeah, this is, I mean, every one of them, yeah, the same thing, I mean, we wanna, we wanna look and make sure that that's clear and that's fair for everybody, we certainly wanna do that.
Well, and I will say, this one poses a, it's a different animal for the, all the other locations, even the one that we approved on the Hampton just north of there, this is the entrance, this is the threshold to Park. So, it's the last, it's the last vacant lot that we're gonna put something like this on, it's right there at that threshold, so that's just, you have an importance level that goes up from the other hotel sites.
Well, not to mention the walking paths go right by there.
Right, I mean, so it's just, you know.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, that, you know, in the future, are we gonna put conditions on all hotels in that area or?
I'm, I'm thinking, this is probably the last one that, that we're looking at, that'll be four in the area, and I don't know that.
If you're talking about across the street, we probably would do that too, so.
Well, we've, kinda what we were talking about earlier, we, we've gone from having no hotels and trying to get one for many years to now having, what, three?
This, this'll be the fourth.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot.
So, it's no secret, I mean, the, the city, the board of Alderman and, and I have to be, we have to look at the growth of the city and manage the growth of the city. We, we have to be careful with that, and, and it's not being disrespectful to a private property owner, we do have an obligation, the people put us in these roles to, to manage the growth of the city. So, we have to be careful with that, so, no, all the things that you mentioned are things that will be top of mind, that will be looked at and make sure it's fair.
Well, on the other three, I'm not, I'm not here to give me pushback, did, did they have conditions on them?
There's not an actual conditional use permit?
Well, did you put the same kinda conditions and restrictions on them or?
We haven't put anything yet, so you're, what we're asking here now is, do, instead of it being permitted by right, 'cause you're asking for amendment to an existing pud, that doesn't allow it. So, instead of asking, or instead of allowing it to come in permitted by right, we're saying, okay, we'll allow it, but under conditional use permit. The other ones you have on the Silo Square side, their original pud allowed them permitted by right, so it didn't require that extra step, and it was approved as such. You're coming in and amending something that never wanted the hotels there. So, the extra contingencies are being put on you because you're asking to void out the original approvals there and put something there that the board did not approve. So, that, that's gonna be the difference between you and the Silo.
I'd like to understand, we can put it across the street, but we can't put it on that lot, and I mean.
Well, I didn't do the denial on the first one, Diamond's has noted, he said no to hotels, so we're coming in and amending something. When Brian came in, his original one was presented with the allowance of two hotels and was approved by right in his zoning, your zoning said no. So, you're coming in and saying, well, I know we said no originally, but I want it now. So, with yours being right there at the threshold to Park, you know, it's, I think they're saying, we understand there needs to be a hotel there, but because of the location, we have that extra restriction on you, so.
Basically, to summarize it for the common people in the room, the other one was a pud.
Yes.
And so, that means that everything is, if it's approved as a pud, the whole thing is approved, whereas if you're trying to rezone individual piece of property, it's a different animal.
Yeah, well, his actually was a pud, but his pud did not allow it, so he's coming in trying to amend a pud and change the allowances in it, and Brian's allowed it by right to begin with.
Okay. Okay, we're, we're, hey, I think everybody in the room wants it to be a quality development, let, let us work on it, we'll figure it out. But I appreciate you coming and talking with us too, and, and, uh, so we've had, uh, we've had a motion and a second, if there's no other, is there any other discussion? Uh, all in favor to table it, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries will be tabled on item two.
Okay, we'll bring it back to first week.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is our mayor's report. Um, the only thing really I wanna spend talking with you about tonight is, last week I spent a few days, uh, in Jackson, uh, talking to state officials about, uh, the interstate widening, uh, Interstate fifty-five, y'all know the issue, it's something we've expressed concern about and been asking for help with for about the last ten years. Uh, we know that MDOT has analyzed that as one of the most, uh, capacity-challenged interstate systems and roadways in our state for, uh, for over a decade. And so, basically, what we did is just went to, um, you know, to request that with the federal transportation bill, the money that's going to the state of Mississippi that they've not had before, that they make us a priority. And the solution is to widen Interstate fifty-five from where it bottlenecks, um, going southbound, uh, when you get past Goodman Road at bottlenecks from ten lanes down to four. And MDOT has already designed a plan that would take that project and it's, and widen that to ten lanes all the way to Church Road, and then rework the Church Road interchange, which includes widening Church Road, uh, adding a loop on the, uh, southeast, uh, corner, which would eliminate the left-hand turns and help traffic move more efficiently there. That's phase one, uh, phase two of the project is to go south from Church Road to two sixty-nine and change that from four lanes to ten lanes also, and also add a star landing interchange. And then phase three is to carry it further, southbound from I two sixty-nine to Hernando and make that six lanes, and then also rework the Commerce, uh, street exit, make it wider underneath the overpass, you know, improve the interchange there. It's a massive project, but, um, that's what we've been asking for, that's the ultimate solution. Uh, we're asking for at least phase one to begin, you can't do the other two phases until you do phase one. Uh, the reason that's, um, such a big issue for all of us in South Haven is we're in the epicenter of the problem. I mean, we're, we're phase one, uh, Church Road is in the middle of our city, it's holding back developments, there's developments that wanna come there that are not gonna come, till the interstate is widened. Um, also, not to mention, uh, the biggest deal is a public safety hazard, anytime there's a wreck on the interstate, it shuts down traffic, stops traffic. Even on a normal day without a wreck, at four-thirty in the afternoon, you can stand on the Goodman Road Bridge and look south, and you can see traffic stop. Not congested, but stopped on the interstate, don't have to tell you how dangerous that is. Our police will tell you that one of the most common locations of wrecks on I fifty-five are at the Horn Lake Creek Bridge, uh, which is just north of Church Road between Church and Goodman, so we're in the epicenter of the problem. Uh, the report tonight is, uh, we had good meetings, I mean, we had people that, um, I think it was a plus that, you know, it was, um, you know, in November and not, you know, during the session when everything is chaotic in the Capitol, so we were able to have one-on-one meetings with key people down there. And they asked a lot of questions, we showed maps, explained the issue, the statistics, um, just, y'all, I've probably said this before in this meeting, but the two thousand twenty census shows that over fifty percent of the population growth in the entire state of Mississippi from two thousand ten to two thousand twenty happened in one county, and that's DeSoto County. And, uh, DeSoto County in two thousand twenty-one issued more auto tags than any other county in the state. So, there's, there's no doubt that we have a problem here, and as I told them, it's not just a DeSoto County issue, it's a North Mississippi issue. You know, y'all see development as it moves south, and eventually, you know, that development, those prospects will be going to Tate County in Centotopia. Um, so this is something that affects people in Tate County as well, so it is a, it's truly a North Mississippi problem. But, again, the report is that we received well, uh, the meetings went extremely well, I will say this, not to be overly dramatic, and, uh, we're not getting the shovels ready tomorrow, but I'll tell you that the meetings were different than any other meetings that I've had in the last ten years. And I've been to DC, uh, four times, talked to, um, our, uh, United States congresspeople and senators, uh, on four different occasions about this issue. Uh, been to Jackson numerous times, obviously had local meetings with MDOT, and I felt that these were the most productive meetings that we've ever had. So, I'm encouraged by that, we hope that it, um, that it continues to materialize, and, and I'll continue to update everyone about that. Until then, there's a website, it's called Driving DeSoto, uh, you can go to the website, there's a petition on there, uh, where anyone can sign, and I would encourage anyone to go to Driving DeSoto and sign that petition. The reason is it's important for our state officials to know that this is not just the mayor of South Haven, or DeSoto County supervisors, or Hernando, or Alabrange, or. or DeSoto County supervisors or Hernando or Isle of Branch or, or Walls or Horn Lake. Um, these are the people that actually drive the interstate, Mississippians that drive it. These are business people that are trying to bring new commerce to Mississippi. A lot of these people are in other states and they would love to bring their business, you know, in the two sixty-nine I fifty-five corridor, but they're not gonna come until this is done. So, there's a tremendous opportunity cost for the state of Mississippi right now. And so, I would encourage, uh, everyone to sign this petition from, you know, citizens driving it, business owners, potential, uh, investments that can be made in Mississippi. And I think that sends a better message for them so they can get a true feel of the magnitude of the problem. But DrivingDeSoto.com, go to that and sign up if you will. That's all I have this evening. Are there any, any questions for me about anything?
I saw you start, we're starting to, uh, switch over to the LED lights. I think it's great.
Yeah, there'll be a, a formal announcement that'll come on that. But, uh, but yes, the LED, uh, the, uh, lights throughout the city will, are about to start a major conversion process to LEDs throughout the city. And that started this week, yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, let's move on. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on this date.
Take it.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update.
I just have two quick items. Uh, first item, um, is just the authorization for donation. It was a budgeted for and discussed, but was inadvertently left off the resolution for donations and is for, um, DeSoto Park. It's now twenty thousand dollars under Mississippi Code twenty-one nineteen sixty-five. Um, so just authorization for that donation. That was budgeted, um, just inadvertently left off the resolution for the donations.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries.
And the next item is, uh, we went to bid, uh, recently on chemicals for the water treatment plant, the water treatment, uh, chemicals. And, uh, since the contract, uh, will be expiring, I think before the next meeting, wanna go ahead and get the bids, a bid approved. The, the low bid was Ido Chemical. They were the low bid and only bid. That's been our con, or our vendor for this contract for the last ten years. Um, they, um, uh, well, so tonight just need authorization to accept them as a low bid for the water treatment chemicals. So, uh, and also for Ray Humphrey to sign the contract with Ido Chemical and supply company, um, as, has been done in the past for the, um, chemical bid so that we can make sure we have those, uh, for the water treatment plants in between now and the next meeting.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second of Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing, leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill, leak adjustment docket is presented.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda are two claims dockets. Is there a motion to approve docket one?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve claims docket number one in the amount of four million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-four cents, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion on docket one? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve docket two?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve docket number two in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second.
On docket two, we have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda, uh, we have the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
So, move. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. The need this evening is potential and ongoing litigation by and against the city, economic development, and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Payne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. As have it, motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.